All right, good evening and welcome to this candidate forum hosted by the Johnson County Post featuring candidates running for Blue Valley School Board, two separate Blue Valley School Board seats. We will give the candidates here a chance to introduce themselves in just a moment, but first, my name is Kyle Palmer. I'm the editor of the Johnson County Post and I will also be the moderator for this forum. I will say this is night six of 12 nights of forums, so after this, we're on the downslope for us. So, okay, so this is the halfway point for our forum schedule. We've got six more coming up, doing it forums all across Johnson County for city councils, mayors, school boards, and so glad that the candidates here for Blue Valley School Board could be here tonight to share their views. We do consider events like this our bread and butter. We've hosted such forums nearly every year since the Post's founding, nearly 15 years ago as the Prairie Village Post. We believe that they allow readers and residents of Johnson County a chance to see and hear from the people who would represent their communities and whether those people match up with their positions and priorities and allow themselves to be educated before they go to the polls. So, we do appreciate you and the audience being here tonight as well and those of you watching online. If you're a subscriber to the Post, we want to thank you. It's your support that allows us to do events like this, 12 of them, over the course of the fall. If you are just first encountering us or maybe have not subscribed yet, consider going to JohnsonCountyPost.com and signing up for a one-month, $1 trial offer. You can check us out and cancel anytime after that, but we sure do appreciate those of you who are our paying subscribers. That's where we get most of our revenue. We have nearly 8,000 paying subscribers now. A big thanks to Johnson County Library for co-sponsoring this event tonight at Lee Wood Pioneer Library. Johnson County Library is helping us put on multiple forums this fall, and so we do appreciate their support, their openness and their responsiveness and helping get things set up, and so we do appreciate that partnership and look for more forums at Johnson County Library locations coming up in the next few weeks. We are also live streaming this forum tonight on the Post's Facebook page. We plan to do that with the other forums as well. This forum in its entirety will be archived at our Facebook page and also on our new YouTube channel between now and through November 4th. So, if you have to leave early, if you're watching online and can't watch it all the way through, you can go back and watch it, watch the relevant parts, watch your candidates, watch the issues that are important to you, and educate yourself before you go to the polls on November 4th or before in early voting. And then finally, I also want to thank the candidates who are here tonight. Running for office can be very time-consuming and labor-intensive, and so we do appreciate you taking some time this evening to share your views, introduce yourself to the voters, even if there's a big homecoming game tonight for one of us that has to leave immediately after this. So, we do very much thank you for, again, taking the time, all three of you. Well, let's briefly lay out the format for this forum before giving the candidates a chance to introduce themselves. This forum features candidates running for two contested seats on the Blue Valley School Board. I'll also note there is a third uncontested race for Blue Valley School Board. That's current board member Sonia Evans, but she does not have a challenger, and so her name might appear on some of your ballots, but she's not here tonight just because we tried to reserve these events for those where there's a decision that needs to be made for voters. For tonight's forum, each candidate will be given one minute to make a brief opening statement to introduce themselves, and then they will be asked a series of questions. I have some prepared questions here, based in part on reader feedback we've gotten via email. If you have a burning issue you'd like to ask about, you have an index card on your chair, you can write that question down, and Leah will be circulating around the room. You can hand it to her, and she will hand it to me, and I'll see if that's something we either do not have planned to ask or matches up or frames an issue that I was already going to ask about in a different way. So, questions both planned as well as if you want to contribute some throughout the event. I'll also mention, I have already said this to the candidates, but if a candidate mentions their opponent by name or there's some reason I feel a need for a rebuttal within a certain race, I might allow up to 30 seconds for that other candidate to respond. We do want to get through as many issues as possible, so I'm not going to get extended back and forth between particular candidates, but just want to note that if that opportunity arises, I will give it. Well, let's get going. Before we begin, we drew lots, and Gina Knapp was lucky enough to get the number one, so she will go first in her race. Her opponent, Steve Roberts, did not indicate that he could not be here, said that tonight would work for him, so I'm not sure if he will show, but if he does, the seat is open. But let's give Gina Knapp a chance to give her opening statement, and you all get 60 seconds for all of this, and we'll start with Gina.
And thank you to the Johnson County Post for hosting the forum tonight. It's really important to have an opportunity as a municipal candidate to be able to speak in front of our constituents, especially on the live stream for people to be able to watch later on, because it's hard to get the word out when you have 110,000 people who are eligible to vote for your race, such as ours here in Blue Valley. My name is Gina Knapp. As you mentioned, I've served on the school board for the past four years. I spent a year as vice president, and this past year I was the president of the school board, where we hired a new superintendent. I'm running for reelection because of when I originally ran, I ran for special education, thought that we could do better with our special education students and get better funding for our special education at the legislature. We have made some progress on that, but there's a lot more to be made. We've also had a lot of post-COVID recovery and learning that's needed to be done, and we've started doing that. We've seen new literacy, oh, sorry, new literacy and mathematics curriculum. Thank you. Thank you, Dave, for giving me that word. Curriculum in the last couple of years that has been approved and has seen a significant increase in test scores.
Well, thank you to Gina Knapp for her introduction. Again, her opponent, Steve Roberts, if he comes, we'll keep the seat open for him. Let's go to the next race, and we'll start going left, right, down the aisle. We'll start with David Benson. David, your opening statement.
Well, thank you. Appreciate the Post and the Johnson County Library system for hosting these events. It is important that you know something about the candidates. Very briefly, I'm a career educator, 44 years, over five decades in the business, and 33 of those years I was a school superintendent in Kansas, Missouri, and Iowa. I have a PhD from Kansas State University, degrees from Pitt State and Wichita State. So, I appreciate this opportunity to continue my service to the community as a school board member.
And we'll move the microphone over, and the last main statement we'll give to Jim McMullin.
Thanks, Kyle. I appreciate the opportunity to come and do this again. We did it four years ago, and I thrive on the opportunity to just engage in respectful dialogue on things we agree with, things we don't agree on. And so, my name is Jim McMullin. I have had the privilege, I really have, it has been a privilege to serve on the Blue Valley School Board for the last four years. I've spent that time on the Finance Committee, on the Blue Valley Rec Commission, and the Special Ed Council, and, you know, just love the opportunity to dig into it. I'll just say quickly, my three campaign themes, and I'll go into them, I'm sure, in my responses are read great books, solve tough problems, protect taxpayer money, and we'll have opportunity to dig into that. Thank you.
Well, thank you to all the candidates for your opening statements. I'll just note for you and for the audience as well here in the room, in a forum earlier this week, we had a little bit of sound interference with our speaker, and it started making a funny noise. We're not sound engineers, we're just trying to do this. So, it's a quick fix, but it might happen. It's not an interruption, but we might have to kind of restart some equipment. I just, fair warning if that happens. Hopefully, it doesn't disrupt anyone speaking. But let's go to the first question, and we'll start with David Benson. That's the order we'll go in, since Gina Knapp went first on opening statements. So, you kind of introduced yourselves, so now I'll just give you a chance to expound on that a little bit. Jim started to get into it, and so this is exactly what I want you all to say. What are your biggest priorities? What do you see as the biggest challenges facing Blue Valley schools over the next four years, and how would you face that if elected? And for this question, unlike others, I'll give you 90 seconds, so a chance to kind of, again, explain what you see as the biggest challenge and what your priorities are if elected, and we'll start with David Benson, 90 seconds.
Okay, thank you. I think the biggest challenge is going to be retaining, hiring, and attracting great faculty and staff members. Those of you who may not realize it, but there are, the candidate pool is drying up. So, we need to put ourselves in the position to have the best possible school district environment for our faculty and staff. That is being impeded right now by another priority of mine, which is the amount of general fund money that is required of us to maintain our special education programming. When special education was first enacted, the IDEA, the federal government promised us 40 cents on every dollar, and it was up to the states to do the rest. Never happened. So, we need to engage legislatively to help solve this problem so that we can reinvest those dollars back into our faculty and staff.
Staying in the same race, I give the microphone over to Jim McMullin. Again, the biggest challenge you see facing Blue Valley over the next four years, and also give you a chance maybe to talk about your priorities, 90 seconds.
Okay. I think maybe I'll just go into one just because it's 90 seconds. My first theme that I mentioned is read great books, and I focus on that because if you look at the changing environment in which students operate and live, it's vastly different than the one that we, that all, everybody in this room grew up with, in a less, far less technology-connected world. The result of that has been, we have seen, and this was, this occurred, this began before COVID, we saw test scores falling, and it's not a Blue Valley problem, it's a statewide and nationwide problem, and it's the way that young people engage with reading material, and it flows from that, the development of critical thinking skills and writing skills, and all of those things are interconnected. Now, we live in a world that we didn't even have, it wasn't even a topic for conversation four years ago when we ran, which is artificial intelligence, and the reliance and the interaction that our young people, I mean, I have it, I do use it in my business every single day. So, if I'm using it in my business, so are all of our students, and there's got to be a, we, as an educational system, have to be thoughtful and disciplined in the way we engage and help our young people develop the critical thinking skills, and it is through a deep commitment to literacy, both at the elementary level all the way up to the high school level.
Rounding out this question, we'll come back to Gina Knapp. What do you see as the biggest challenge facing Blue Valley over the next four years? Also, maybe a chance to talk about your priorities. How would you face that challenge if elected, or reelected in your case?
So, I think that Jim touched on it, artificial intelligence and how rapidly it's evolving is going to be the biggest challenge that we face in the next four years. The other challenge that we are currently facing is a rewrite of the formula, the school finance formula in Topeka. That is going to be a huge challenge in how we are going to be able to attract and retain educators over the next couple of decades. Like David said, the teacher pool is drying up. We need to be continuing to increase teacher salaries. We need to increase their retirement funds back to what it previously was. They've been cutting slowly the retirement benefits over the years, and so that's something that we need to be advocating for in Topeka and to make sure that we address. The other big thing related to school finance is special ed funding, and everyone talks about it, but as long as special ed is not fully funded, as it is mandated to be, and when I say fully, I mean the 92% that it's supposed to fund us, $16 million that we should be receiving from the state that's mandated to come to us, that we are having to transfer from our operational fund, which means it comes from what we can pay our teachers and administrators. It prevents us from lowering class sizes. If we had that other $16 million every year, imagine what our teachers would be paid and administrators.
Going forward, I would just say, since you don't have to share a mic, Gina, move that microphone just a little bit closer to you for your future answers. Just getting some feedback on the stream that you could be a little bit louder. Thank you so much. And next order goes to, we'll start with Jim McMullin, and since Jim and David are both here, once Jim answers, we'll give the mic to David before coming back to Gina, just so that voters could hear them both back-to-back. So, same question for all of you. A couple of you mentioned teacher retention, teacher, attracting teachers. So, this does come from a reader email, quote, "What specific policies will you advocate for if elected to the board to maximize teacher pay and retention?" That is different from other local districts where we compete for talented educators in Johnson County. So, is teacher pay and retention a priority for you? We'll start with Jim McMullin. This will be 60 seconds.
Okay. Well, the, I'm just maybe preface it with, fortunately, we don't agree on, on my service on the board, we don't agree on everything, but one thing that our board has agreed very uniformly, and this is across a number of different board members, is commitment to teacher pay and teacher increases, teacher salary increases, and that is across the salary schedule, et cetera, where we can, where we can have impact. That's helped make Blue Valley, you know, highly competitive in the county. Doesn't mean it's necessarily the pinnacle where we want our teachers to be compensated, because I think we all, I think we all recognize that teachers, especially in the kind of a large class-size environment with 125, 150 students in a semester, is a pretty physically demanding and mentally demanding job.
So, I'll just ask a follow-up, just to give you a little bit more time to answer. So, the question asking specific policies that you would advocate for or have advocated for, I think beyond just, you know, making sure pay is up, are there any specific policies that you would support to attract teachers, retain teachers in Blue Valley?
Well, the, there are a few ideas that we're working on. One, but it's not really, this is not a Jim McMullin-only idea. This is multiple more board members and our superintendent have promoted the idea, and I think it's a great idea to explore the development of housing resources, basically, you know, teacher, district-supported or structured housing cooperatives or developments that would make Blue Valley a more affordable place for teachers, especially young teachers, to live, because Blue Valley is not really attainable for first, for people right out of college or young in their lives.
Microphone over to David Benson, same question to you. What would, policies would you advocate for on the board to maximize teacher pay and retention that might be different from other local districts that are competing with Blue Valley for educators? 60 seconds.
Yep, certainly. Teacher pay is a priority. It's in the strategic plan, and I certainly support that being front and center. In the past, we have been creative. We have been creative on opening new schools with the legislature's consent to have funding to open schools. Also, Johnson County, at one point while I was here for 11 years, we passed an economic development sales tax, and the economic development tax money went to all of the Johnson County schools and was distributed on a headcount basis. That's creative. That's looking outside the school finance formula and trying to find revenue sources that we could rely on outside of the legislature.
Same question to Gina Knapp. What policies would you or have you advocated for to, again, try to attract and retain teachers in what must be a fairly competitive market in Johnson County for young educators?
Absolutely. So, again, I'll reiterate the special ed funding, because that's $16 million that could go to teacher pay that would have a tremendous impact on our salary schedule. But not only that, since I've been in office, we went to Topeka with a little bit of a creative solution in that the cost-of-living adjustment that they cap, that we're able to add to the levy here in Johnson County. They cap it so that we can only levy a certain amount for that cost-of-living adjustment for Johnson County. We were able to get that increased so that we were able to increase the amount that was levied to go to teachers' pay, and so they, we were able to give a 7% increase last year, and we gave a 4% increase to the salary schedule this year. So, we are doing some creative things other than just paying lip service to it. We have been able to implement things that have resulted in direct teacher pay increase for us.
A follow-up question for all of you. It's related to personnel, so that's why I'll ask it now before moving on to another issue. This is another email from a reader. "How do you, the board, evaluate the performance of building-level principals or administrators if or when community members express concerns or dissatisfaction with their leadership? What should be the board's role in instances like this, if any?" So, again, kind of talking about personnel. If there is an issue at a particular building, what's the board's role in possibly stepping in or evaluating the performance of principals at the building level? And this will start with Gina Knapp first. I know you just went, but the order falls to you, because there's three of you, so 60 seconds. We'll start with you.
All right. Well, I think that largely this particular role is that of the administration of the school district. They have policies in place, and we put policies in place that the administrators follow, and they are much more in tune with what's going on in their schools and in the district than we are, and this is not the place of the school board to get involved.
Same question, might be the same answer, but I'll just give it to you as well, David Benson. Is there any role you see for the board in stepping in, evaluating the performance of building-level principals or administrators?
That's the role of the superintendent and the administrative staff, but people need to know there's really two kinds of evaluation that can go on. There's the ongoing competency, day-to-day evaluations. We stay out of that as a board member. However, there's also the outrageous conduct issue, and that occasionally does come to board members, and our job at that point is to support the recommendation of our administrative staff and the superintendent and sit in judgment in a quasi-judicial basis of that outrageous conduct to determine if that is so detrimental to a person's employment that they should not be employed any further.
And finally, answering this question, Jim McMullin. Any role you see for the board regarding this particular circumstance, if there's a building-level principal or administrator that needs to have their performance evaluated?
Yeah, I agree with what Gina and David said. Generally speaking, we hire and hold our superintendent accountable. Unfortunately, for the last several years, we've had a prince, sorry, superintendent who had deep relationships in all of the school buildings and really had her finger on the pulse of what was going on in those schools. But that doesn't mean that constituents who have concerns don't necessarily bring those concerns to board members. They do. Sometimes it's for forum shopping, right, to see if they can get some action that they couldn't get through administrative realm. Generally speaking, my approach is you have a trusted executive in the superintendent role, and you expect that individual to oversee that, those staff members that report up to her, and so I don't, we don't want to be in the job of second-guessing.
Reminder, if you have a question, a burning question that you have, write it down. Leah will be circulating around the room. I do have a couple up here already, but if you have one, write it down. Leah will grab it and bring it up to me. I do have some other questions, but if you think of something, please give me some more ideas. A recent op-ed in the Kansas City Star ruffled some feathers in Blue Valley, made the argument that Blue Valley's academic performance has been slipping in recent years, even as the district's budget continues to increase and its reserves top $300 million. The writer suggesting that the district was not effectively spending its money to drive student achievement. Now, Blue Valley Superintendent, new superintendent, Gillian Chapman responded with her own written piece, pointing out that nearly all of the district's reserves are restricted to paying for things like debt service and capital projects, and she also argued that by many metrics, state test scores, ACT scores, graduation rates, the number of national merit semifinalists, Blue Valley is one of the top, if not the top, public school district in Kansas. As a board member, you'll be in charge of approving the budget, setting spending priorities. Do you think Blue Valley is spending effectively on instruction that drives student outcomes? Why or why not? Use some specific examples. Order falls to David Benson first for 60 seconds.
Okay, thank you. I believe the district has been responsible. I attended the last two board meetings and saw how the revenue budget was presented to the board, and the board has taken action to have that published. The fact remains that if we're going to continue the excellence that this district is known for and has been known for for a number of years, we need to make those critical investments in staff. Our faculty and staff have to be the very best. That's where the rubber meets the road, and that's where students get motivated, and that's where students perform. And if we can't do that because we're restricted by a new school finance formula, for example, that's coming down the pike, then we'll be in trouble. Thank you.
Jim McMullin, do you think Blue Valley is spending effectively on instruction that drives student outcomes? Why or why not? Use some specific examples, and move that microphone over. So, Jim, yep, there you go.
Yeah. As it relates to effectively operating funds for purposes of academic programming, teacher salaries, et cetera, I think Blue Valley is one of the best-run public entities that I've observed. Now, I'm involved in it, so, but I, I'm really quite impressed with the financial leadership. I disagree with some of the capital allocation expenditures, but as it relates to instruction, I think we are doing a good job. I don't think we're doing an awesome job, because I always think there's room to move and to move up, and there's some, there is some truth to the falling test scores. You can look at our ACT scores over 10 years, and they have fallen. But as I mentioned in my opening statement, they have fallen everywhere, and so it's incumbent, and I don't necessarily blame Blue Valley or what we've done, but I do think it's incumbent upon us to respond, and I think just specifically, I know I got this.
Yeah, of course, yeah, yeah. Finish your thought.
That we've done two really fantastic things as a school district, and I'd like to say that it was like the school board that made these decisions, but really it was the administrative staff that made these decisions, and that was implementation of phonics, education, reintroduction of that, and the adoption of a new math curriculum. It was like the very first board vote that we made when Gina and I were on the board, and it's done, it's done very good things, but it takes a long time for those things to see their way through.
Same question to Gina Knapp. Do you think the school district is spending its money effectively in terms of driving student outcomes, student achievement? Why or why not?
Yeah. So, I'll agree with both of these gentlemen in that we are. We do scrutinize the budget every year, and we just had a revenue-neutral meeting with the public to discuss this in even further detail. But as Jim mentioned, you know, we did just implement a couple of new curriculums in the last four years that have gotten our test scores to start going back up. They went down for many years post-COVID, which we know that nationwide that's been what's happening. The other thing that was mentioned was that ACT scores are going down. That is true, but Kansas also implemented free ACT score, or testing for all juniors, and so when you have a bigger pool of people taking the test, you have naturally lower scores. The other thing that came into play is colleges aren't requiring test scores anymore, and so people have less of a reason why to take the ACT multiple times, so they're not driving to get higher test scores. So, there's a multiple, there's many reasons for having lower scores.
Finish your thought, yeah.
Yeah. Many reasons for having lower scores, other than Blue Valley is failing us with our money.
Another question about financing, budget spending, and the order will fall to Jim first. The biggest chunk of a taxpayer's annual bill goes to the local school district. Do you think Blue Valley taxpayers get good value for their dollar? What do you say to taxpayers, maybe some of whom don't have kids in the district who we hear often, either, you know, for school boards or city councils, whatever, want property tax relief? What do you say to those taxpayers? Do you think they're getting a good value for their tax dollar in Blue Valley? 60 seconds to Jim McMullin.
Yes. I believe that generally speaking, that we have a good value for our money. Just the, I voted against the budget at the most recent board meeting. I was the only board member that did, but the reason I did is, most of that, but most of what we control as a school board is allocated towards capital projects. That is for building projects, et cetera. And I just have a little bit different philosophy, I think, than the rest of my fellow board members on how much money we should allocate for future capital expenditures. As it relates to those aspects of the property tax budget, that mill levy that we control that relate to operating expenses, primarily the local option budget and a portion of the capital outlay budget, I'm fully in support of the way we use that. I think our citizens demand it. I think it's across the political spectrum that they demand high-quality schools, and it reflects well on our school district and our local community to have great schools.
David Benson, do you think Blue Valley taxpayers get a good value for their tax dollar? What do you say to taxpayers who may want to see property tax relief, considering that the biggest chunk of their annual bill goes to the school district?
Yes, it does, and I think the taxpayers are getting a outstanding value for their money in the Blue Valley School District. What I have always told people is What I have always told people is the value of your community, the value of your home is all tied up in the support of local institutions. School district, rightly you said, take up a lion's share of that. As long as we can do what we're doing and maintain a stable mill rate from year to year to year, then I think the community's getting a positive and a good value from the investment in schools. And certainly, certainly the proof is in the pudding. We have outstanding results. And as Gina indicated, there are a myriad of reasons why test scores go up and down. But we have great kids, we have great teachers, and we're getting positive results.
And the last person to answer this question will go to Gina Napp. Do you think Blue Valley taxpayers get a good value for their tax dollar? Why or why not?
Absolutely. So one of the reasons why a lot of people move to Blue Valley is because of the schools. We know that, and so even for those who don't have kids in school anymore, it's still very valuable. I will point out that I'm the only candidate on the stage with a child in Blue Valley Schools, and next year I'll be the only school board member, if re-elected, that has a child in Blue Valley Schools. I think it's extremely important to note that we need to have somebody who has a child in those schools dealing with all of the issues that we're dealing with today in order to really feel at home at that dice and talking about what's going on in the schools.
Well, I don't know if it was Gina's intention, but I will just give the other two gentlemen on the stage a chance maybe to respond to that directly. Having kids in school, is that important? David, you might be in a little station, a little different station in life, but we'll see. I just say 30 seconds, 30 seconds to a minute, just to kind of explain and respond to that, even though that wasn't maybe necessarily Gina's intention. But we do get this question a lot from readers. They want to know, especially in school board races, what is your relationship to the district? Do you have kids, or did you have kids in the district? And maybe just general public education in general. So give you 60 seconds to respond to that.
Certainly. Both of my children graduated from Blue Valley North, received an outstanding education, and went on to complete university-level educations. And one is a JD, is very successful in his endeavors. The other is a biology major. The thing that I would point out is I'm very invested in schools. I'm invested in schools as a professional. I also have a, basically a six-year-old grandson who has just started kindergarten, and he's going to turn six here in the next few days. So I'm going to have a grandson in the elementary school, and I'll be paying close attention.
And just wrapping that up, Jim McMullin, if you wanted to just let the readers know, yeah, your relationship to the schools, children?
Yeah, I've actually got one of my Blue Valley Southwest graduate out here in the audience, and two of my grandkids. So we've had experience at Blue Valley West, Blue Valley Southwest, Blue Valley Academy, and, you know, I'm invested in the community. I don't, we don't, I don't do this for the stock options. I do it, I do it because I love our community and I want our community to thrive.
I think I was hearing a future Blue Valley student earlier in the crowd, so does that, brought that in? All right, next question, order goes to Gina. So we'll start here. This came from a reader email. Should funding from the state of Kansas be given to private schools? As a board member, you will be in a position to advocate for or against state policies or legislation that could take funding from public schools in order to go to the benefit of students and families enrolled in private or homeschooling. So again, that question, should funding from the state of Kansas be given to private schools? What would be your position in working with state lawmakers in Topeka? 60 seconds, Gina Napp.
Right. So the purpose of public education is to educate everybody despite your political, religious, and otherwise views. That's what we do in public education. There's standards that we have to adhere to that are set by the Kansas Board of Education and the Department of Education. Private schools are not held to the same standards, and therefore they should not be receiving public funding.
David Benson, what's your stance on public taxpayer dollars going to, potentially going to private schools, homeschooling? What would be your position when talking to and advocating for this at the state level?
I would be absolutely opposed to any schemes, concepts, ways in which would divert public money to private schools. We have an obligation to the public, and we serve anybody who crosses our threshold. And that is our commitment to our community. The fact is, I have fought this for 33 years as a superintendent in three different states, and never have I seen a bill or a proposal that would have the private schools, homeschools, or any other such scheme meet the standards that are placed upon public schools. We don't just operate in a vacuum. We have legal standards, we have the Department of Education rules and regulations, and we follow those as absolutely, as faithfully as we can as districts and private schools of any stripe will resist having standards such as audits. We are audited every year.
Yep.
We'd like to see the audits of our private schools.
And wrapping up this question in that same race, Jim McMullin, do you think funding from the state of Kansas should be given to private schools? What would be your stance if advocating for or against such policies or legislation in Topeka?
I don't support this. I understand Gina and David's, the point they articulated. My own view is that we, as a community, have invested a lot of money into the school system, and I want those dollars to fund, and most of our students, of all political stripes, all religious stripes, all backgrounds go to our public schools, and those are the ones we need to fund. I've had kids in private school, we have homeschooled kids, and really, frankly, from our experience with our parochial school where several of our kids have gone, like, the last thing we really want in that environment is for our money to have to like round-trip through Topeka to get back over there. You know, it's kind of a fundamental freedom of the United States. Like, if you don't want to go to the public schools, you've got these other options, and there are some really great options. But I'd rather not have politicians in Topeka telling us what we can and can't teach our kids.
David Benson, the order will fall to you for this next question. A couple of you mentioned it in your opening statements and/or talking about challenges, priorities, that is artificial intelligence. And this does come from a reader email. What is your position on student use of AI for homework in school projects? You can certainly share how you feel about the use of AI in education personally, but I guess to broaden the scope of this question, I'll ask, what do you see as the school board's role in guiding schools and teachers in how to use AI, if at all, in class? And this is certainly something that's going to be very much a topic over the next four years. So David Benson, we'll start with you, 60 seconds.
Okay, thank you. AI and technology in general, there's no going back. We're not going to undo what's going on in our society. Our responsibility as a school board, our responsibility as a school district is to educate our students on what we call appropriate use doctrine. We need to have our students engaged in AI and in technology so that they can do things like fill out a college application. It's a common application now, it's online. ACT, SAT are going online. We need to have kids that know how to do that. AP, AP testing is no longer in this great dome, it's online. Our kids need to know AI, technology, to stay in the game and be ready once they graduate.
Jim McMullin, what's the board's role in crafting policies to guide schools and teachers on how to use AI in class?
I think the board will be pretty involved in conversation with the administration. My particular view on this is that there's, there is no question that students a certain age are going to use AI in the development of any work that they do outside of class. It's, there's, it's, that, I think, is inevitable. You could have policies that certain, certain things, there are certain tasks should not do that, but it's, that aspect is inevitable. What's really critical is what we do in the classroom. And it's why I am so passionate about my theme of read great books, because we have an obligation to this next generation to help them develop the critical thinking skills that come from spending a long period of time with complex written material, reading it, writing it, thinking it through, speaking about it. All of those things are critical. So as long as we do those things and figure out appropriate ways to incorporate artificial intelligence, I think we're doing, we'll be doing a good job.
And back to Gina Napp, what is your opinion on the school board's role in guiding schools and teachers on how to use AI in class?
So as we hired our new superintendent over the course of the past year, one of the big things that we talked about was AI. Her experience with artificial intelligence, her experience with implementing new ideas, big new ideas, because we wanted to make sure that Blue Valley was set up to be able to grow into the future. One thing that I'll mention is that, just to throw it back to Jim, is that we continue to have votes against technology, but we all are discussing that we have big technology issues to be addressing in the next few years. So I would press as to why we continue to be opposed to technology in the classrooms, but we have to adapt to artificial intelligence.
Jim, you respond directly to that. I mean, I take it, the subtext being you voted against certain things, having classroom screens in schools? I bet, yeah.
I, yeah, I'll preface, I mean, I'll give you, I've consistently voted against the technology spend to have one device in the classroom for each student, starting at the youngest elementary age. And I, here's my view. Not only is it a not helpful, it's detrimental to the development of our kids to do so much learning on devices. I'll be proven right, because schools are moving as much as they can to limit the amount. I'm not saying, I'm not a luddite, I don't want like all technology to go away. I just think that there has been, it's like a flash, shiny new object, and it, that doesn't necessarily result in the further and better development of our kids' reading, et cetera, skills. And by the way, the nationwide test scores, including in Blue Valley, prove that out.
And I will just, since we've kind of gone down a different lane, I'll just give, since it's in the same race, I'll give David, David, I'll give David Benson just a chance to share his views on this particular topic of screens technology in class, just so the voters can see.
Certainly. Technology in the classrooms, it's integral, it's important. There's no great book ever published that you can't look up online, have it in front of you, read it, discuss it, thoroughly dissect it. In my professional career, we went from paper and pencil to no paper and pencil, everything was online. And that, I think, is the story that our workforce would tell us. Also, people need to understand, we don't operate in a vacuum. There's something called SIPA, the Children's Internet Protection Act, okay?
Finish that thought, finish the thought, finish the thought, yeah.
And all of the software we buy, all of the hardware that comes loaded with software is all SIPA compliant. Now, do we have some bright kids that might get around it? Yes. If they do, they violated the fair use policies, and they stand to be disciplined for that.
All right, we'll go to the next issue. The order falls to Jim McMullin. This is a question from the audience on index card. I'll confess, I'm not aware of this, so I hope I get it right when reading this person's question, but maybe you all can expound as well. So this person asks, I'm wondering if the board or the candidates up here tonight are aware of the action taken by the Kansas Board of Regents, which forces Kansas public colleges and universities to no longer offer remedial courses, especially in mathematics? If you are aware of that, what's your opinion on it? If this is just a first-year hearing about it, what's your opinion on it? But how does that affect Blue Valley schools? I will give you 60 seconds, start with Jim McMullin. The idea of eliminating remedial courses in college, how does that impact your view of Blue Valley schools and their preparedness for higher education, if at all?
Well, I'm not aware of the, I'm not aware of the act that you're mentioning. I do think it's a reality that, this is a priority that came out of our strategic plan process. I think there's a uniform view on the board that, and Blue Valley is a big school district, it's a very high-achieving school district, especially relative to others in the state. And so we have great students, and we have great students who are challenged and do challenging work. But it's not necessarily uniform to students of all levels and all caliber. And so we really do need a commitment and a focus to put, to make the most rigorous experience possible for our least achieving, and those students in the middle who, you know, may fall outside of any IEP or special education focus and just kind of float through the system, because you can float through a system as well.
David Benson, the question to you, are you aware of this policy change? Do you think it impacts Blue Valley? Again, speaking specifically about remedial classes not being offered at public colleges and universities anymore, how does that impact Blue Valley students who are going on to higher education?
I was not aware of that, and I would say people misunderstand remedial courses at colleges and universities. Colleges and universities have offered remedial courses, but not for credit. If you can't handle college algebra, you could take a remedial course in college, but you're not getting college credit for it. So that issue is important. Regarding Blue Valley students, I think Jim makes a valid point. Our top students are going to be fine. It is our medium-range students that need help, and we have an obligation to offer them remediation. Thank you.
Gina Napp, again, maybe not aware of the actual policy change, but thinking about remedial courses in higher education, how does that impact Blue Valley students? And how would you want Blue Valley students leaving Blue Valley and going to colleges and universities in Kansas in their preparation?
Right. So, well, of course, we want all of our Blue Valley students to leave prepared to whatever is next for them, whatever's their next step. But as far as colleges, universities, and Kansas no longer offering remedial classes, I think that's a detriment to the state of Kansas in general. There's a lot of kids out there, young adults, that still need remedial math classes, or perhaps a remedial English class, that maybe just gets them to the next level so that they can get their bachelor's degree or master's, whatever they want to go on to do. So I think that there's a variety of reasons people are in remedial classes and taking remedial coursework, and I'm speechless that we would no longer allow them to offer those.
Well, I hope that question was right, because I heard about it, but I trust that you are. I can't fact-check it in real time, though. But thank you for answering that question. We have another question from the audience, and the order falls to Gina Napp to start this one. Given recent high-profile school shootings, as well as the firearm discharge at Blue Valley Middle, what measures do you support or wish to see to prevent gun violence at Blue Valley campuses? Could also just talk more about safety measures in general, but specifically the unfortunate scourge of gun violence on American school campuses. What's your approach and position, Gina Napp? 60 seconds.
All right. So I think this continues to be a really sad part of our society, that we have to continue to discuss this. And the most recent incident that you're mentioning, in case the audience isn't aware, is we had a gun discharged at our middle school. A patron had left their loaded gun in the console of their car, and their child had discharged it on accident. It is legal to have a gun on the property of a school. I do not believe it should be. I think we should be advocating in Topeka for guns to not be allowed on school property, period, no exceptions. Imagine the football game that I'm going to later tonight. Thank you for, shout out, Blue Valley Northwest Huskies. That there can be any number of people in that audience with a gun, and there is nothing we can do about it until they start shooting that gun. And that is terrifying, and it should be terrifying to everybody in this community, because, and we continue to allow it to go on. The other thing I will note is that, and I know that this is going off, but this is an important topic, is that we continue to spend millions and millions of dollars of taxpayers' money every year target-hardening our schools. of dollars of taxpayers' money every year, target-hardening our schools to protect our students. And we are happy to pay for police officers to be at our schools, and for every other security measure that we have at our schools. But as we're continuing to have more taxes raised to come into our schools, to pay for education, to have smaller class sizes, to pay our teachers more, please remember that when you go to vote, and you are voting for people who do not vote for gun safety measures, that you are voting for your taxes to increase to target-harden our schools to protect our children from gun violence.
Uh, David Benson, what measures do you support, or positions, uh, do you support to, wish to see to prevent gun violence?
Well, I think Blue Valley has a long history of hardening their, uh, campuses. I was superintendent of schools here when the Cullenbine shooting occurred, and we had a, a task force of community individuals and educators, and they made recommendations that we, uh, we acted on at that time. We hired a, a former Secret Service, uh, agent to, uh, was retired, to come in and lead. Uh, I've spoken with the current lead of the Blue Valley, uh, police force, uh, very competent individual, uh, hardening of, of topic of, of our properties. Uh, it's, goes so far. And we have a gun culture that is, uh, outside of the bounds of other, uh, advanced, uh, countries and societies. And I think this is, is a topic that goes well beyond the, uh, uh, ability of the school district. But I agree with Gina, it is absolutely crazy that we can't have, uh, no, uh, guns. We, we can't have a gun-free environment, uh, on our school property.
Uh, and then Jim McMullin, wrapping up this question from the audience, what measures do you support or wish to see in order to prevent gun violence on Blue Valley campuses?
Well, the topic that, we, we actually talked about this just, um, last week, or two weeks ago at our school board meeting. And the, the one thing that we could do, that we don't currently do, is we could have police officers at each of our elementary schools. Um, we've got really various, as Gina mentioned, really, you know, secure buildings. But we, as a community, as a society, we, we have armed police officers or guards at banks, we have them at churches. If you go down to the plaza, and you go into any retail store, there's almost always an armed, uh, police officer. And, but we're not doing that to protect our children in the most vulnerable spots that they, that they are. So that is something that we concretely can do. Now, it takes money from the operating budget, and you can want to do everything with your operating funds, but you can't fund it all. So we have to make decisions on whether that extra several million dollars is, you do that, what are you not funding? Now, those are the questions that we're debating. But I support that. I support protecting our elementary schools with, uh, with police officers.
Uh, mindful of time, we have a Leewood City Council forum coming after this, and more importantly, we have a Blue Valley Northwest football game at seven o'clock. So, uh, David Benson, you'll start us off. Consider this a prompt for a closing statement. What qualifies you for this job, and why should voters vote for you? 60 seconds.
Well, I think my, uh, whole life has prepared me for this job, uh, my career, uh, my educational background. Uh, I'm a native Kansan and, and came up through public schools. And as I said in my opening, I, all of my, uh, education has been in, uh, public universities. Uh, I am qualified to be a board member because of my experience, my education, my background, my leadership in getting students to perform at high levels. And that was what we were all about, and that's what we should be all about. And the key to getting students to perform at the highest levels rests in our ability to attract the best and brightest staff.
Staying in the same race, we'll give Jim McMullin a chance to say what qualifies you for this job. Why should voters vote for you?
Well, I, I like to say that my primary qualification is that I live in Blue Valley, I'm a taxpayer in Blue Valley, I care about the community. But specifically, as it relates to education, I, I suppose I could have run for other offices, but the one I really care about is education. I started off as a school teacher in the state of Mississippi when I first got out of college. And I've really had a consistent theme, it's going on 35 years since, since those days, uh, that your life is enriched when you can read complex, interesting, challenging materials, and you can engage in conversation with others, especially others that don't agree with you. And that makes our community and our world a better place. And that's what I want to bring and advocate for in Blue Valley. It's what I've been doing for four years on the board, and I ask for your vote for four more years.
So that's that race, David Benson and Jim McMullin. Those are your choices for that. See, and we'll come back with the final, uh, closing statement. As a word to Gina Napp, what qualifies you for this job, and why should voters vote for you?
Absolutely. So as a parent of a special ed child and two other kids who are in the district, um, I think that that qualifies me immediately, like Jim said, as taxpayers, as parents in this district, but also because I'm here, because of the special education, um, and making sure that we continue to increase the quality of the special education in our district. But not only that, um, as we've been here on the board for the past, as I've been here on the board for the past four years, um, we've gotten really good at working together in a nonpartisan manner, um, to make sure that we're doing what's best for the Blue Valley School District, not what's best for the divide that society sees today. Um, we've done a really good job of that in our school, school board, and I'd like to continue to be able to participate in making sure that we are not divided in our community.
Well, that's Gina Napp. Again, her opponent is Steve Roberts, um, not here tonight, but those are the choices for that race. So give these candidates a round of applause for being here, sharing some of their time and views. And I'm not going to say much else, because we're going to have a quick turnover for Leewood City Council, so, um, we'll stop this forum. If you are going to remain for Leewood, please stay in your seats. If you are here just for Blue Valley, I would ask just that you quickly and efficiently cycle out. And if you want to talk to other people in the room, or talk to these candidates, please do it outside, as I'm going to start the Leewood Council Forum very soon.